2018 at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Madam President.
Yes?
During our moment of silence, I would like to remember and honor our fallen police officer, Mike Conway, who passed away unexpectedly while at work serving the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the council meeting of August 1st, 2018, and bills for payment on August 10th, 17th, and 24th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. You're up, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. This is the mayor's 2018 mid-year budget address to council. As you know, six words sum up my, the goals and motivation of my administration. Build opportunity, restore hope, transform Erie. We want Erie to be a community of choice, where people choose to live here because of five incredible things that are unique to Erie. First, our rich diversity of cultures. Second, our welcoming vibrant neighborhoods. Third, our world-class downtown and bayfront. Fourth, our schools of excellence. And fifth, our abundance of family sustaining jobs. Of course, finances are very important. If the city is financially strong, we can achieve this transformational vision much more rapidly. As with everything I do, I'm committed to being open, honest, transparent, and accessible in discussing the city budget. The final numbers you are seeing today are exactly that. As you understand, a budget is the best estimate of future revenues and expenses. As a general rule of thumb, variances in budget line items compared to actual results, if they're within plus or minus 3%, they're considered acceptable by financial standards. Based on this measure, our projection for the la, and our projection for the last six months of this year, our 2018 actual compared to budget is performing well. There is one large issue, though, that I need to present to you today. If you turn to page five of the mid-year report that you have in front of you, you'll see a box at the bottom of that page. This box shows our projected revenues and projected expenses for all of 2018. Note the last number in the box. We are currently projecting a shortfall of just over $1 million. The exact number was $1,87,810. In a moment, I'm going to explain to you some immediate steps we've taken to reduce that amount of that shortfall. But first, I'd like to explain to you why the shortfall is being projected. In short, one of our revenue sources will not produce the amount of revenue that was budgeted. To see this, please turn to page four of your report. In the middle of page four, under the operating transfers, you'll see three line items, which represent transfers to the city from three areas. The sewer revenue, water authority, refuse and recycling. Both water and refuse recycling are projected to be right on budget, as you can see, but you'll notice that we are proj, we are projected to receive $907,136 less than budgeted from the sewer authority. This is the primary cause of our projected shortfall. So what do we do? As soon as I became aware of this about three weeks ago, I made my senior staff aware of it and asked them to do everything in their power to reduce expenses and increase income. Since then, they have been actively consulting with our finance department before incurring expenses and act, actively looking for ways to do things less costly. However, 87% of our expenses are employee salaries and benefits. So when we have employee turnover, one of the things we're doing is trying to determine if we need to replace that employee. In most cases, we will have to fill vacancies by hiring a replacement. But for every full-time employee we do not have to replace, we can realize an annual savings of around $80,000 in salaries and benefits. So we have taken quick action to reduce this year's shortfall as much as possible, but we probably won't eliminate it. Luckily, we do have surpluses that were earned in 2015, that was a little over $71,000. In 2016, about $67,500, just under that. And last year, there was actually a surplus of over $1.5 million. So the city has adequate reserves to weather this unexpected shortfall. Finally, I'd like to say a word about the 2019 budget. We have not started to actually work on that yet, but we have committed to make an important change to improve the city's financial health. Please don't get me wrong, even with the shortfall projected in this mid-year report, the city remains very financially strong. Here's the change you will see when we present the 2019 budget later this year. Instead of seeing a one-year budget, you'll be reviewing a five-year budget. Financial experts agree that one year is too short a timeframe to plan for our organization's financial well-being. We are converted to the recommended five-year budget so we can plan for and everyone else can see the long-term financial health of the city. This action, by the way, is highly recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. In conclusion, please remember that we have a unique opportunity right now to transform Erie. Financially speaking, we need to do two things long-term. First, we need to have more good family sustaining jobs in Erie. Second, we need to have more people living in Erie. Leaders in Erie from the public, private, and nonprofit sectors, as well as our four local universities, are collaborating like never before to make these two things happen. Erie Insurance is building the biggest building ever built in Erie. Both UPMC Hammett and St. Vincent's have additions in excess of $100 million in construction underway. The Erie Downtown Development Corporation has around $30 million to invest in Erie's core and is committed to creating 750 new downtown housing units over the next 10 years. What Velocity Net is doing on 10th Street and what the Scots are doing on the East Bayfront is incredible. In fact, there's over $600 million in new construction projects underway, and these projects will create over 1,000 new jobs in downtown Erie. And there's more that's still in the planning phases. Our $1 million projected 2018 deficit is not good news, but we will deal with it as I have described. Don't let that one issue distract you from the long-term transformation that is underway in our community. And now I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Madam President, can I ask a question? Mayor, when do you think we'll start to see the proposed budget for next year and then for beyond? Will, will we be doing it earlier? I mean, I'm new to it. I think that, you know, Kathy and I sat in on some budget sessions in December, but I'm wondering if we'll have more of a head start on the budget process itself?
This is, my first year doing it. I believe typically, though, we do it around mid-November, is that correct?
Per ordinance, it's a second meeting in November, so...
But I mean, will there be work, I mean, I'm just, per ordinance, it has to be done by then, or it has to?
Yeah.
Okay, but we could work on it earlier, correct?
If...
I mean...
If we have it done, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
One of the issues is trying to start too early before we know all, as many numbers as we can from this year. You need that information to move forward. But we'll, we'll get started on it as early as I can. As soon as we're ready, we'll involve you guys, for sure.
And I know one of the things that you've really had such success in already is creating a culture of service in City Hall, and I think maybe one of the next things we do is to encourage that culture of innovation that's happening elsewhere so that we have ideas from the bottom up about how to be more efficient and how to work smarter. So I just, I, I trust that that's the direction we're going in, and I think council can get involved in that, too, so...
We've been very active in that. Chris Groner, Brett Wyler are working with these startups, and in fact, last night, I was at a dinner meeting with the 10 new startups that the Innovation District brought here, and, and we actually met with one of them earlier in the day here at City Hall with some proposals they had. So we're very active with innovation. I think that's the key to Erie's future.
Yeah, and I think internally, too, so that people are saying, you know, I just, I think of examples where a lot of times you learn from the grassroots, someone will say, you know, hey, maybe we could do it this way, and it would, it would save money or save time or something. I just think that's a, a thing that we could adopt and strive for, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, just a, a couple of comments. Just, first off, thank you for coming down, Mr. Mayor, and presenting this budget to us. I am concerned about this deficit and borrowing from our reserves to pay for it. How much do we have on, on reserves? Eight, eight million?
In the general fund, at the end of last year, there was about 12 million.
Fund balance. Twelve million. So after this, we'll have about 11 million, a little less than $11 million. So this isn't sustainable. This isn't, this is what got us into trouble in 2004, in the early 2000s, when we started borrowing and borrowing from the fund balance. The reason our credit rating is so good right now for the city is because we have that fund balance, and my concern is if we keep tapping into that fund balance, that's not sustainable for the financial health of this city, and it will affect us when we go to borrow money in the future. So I would really encourage you to do everything you can, and this council will work with you to contain costs. Now, this year, we did hire extra people for the city that weren't budgeted, and if that caused something to do that, caused some of this deficit, that's something we might have to look at, maybe combining a couple positions to, to save money there in terms of personnel that are non-union and otherwise. The other thing, too, is just, I want everyone, like, just to be cognizant of, the Gulf Reserve is projected to have a deficit, and so the sewer is projected to have a deficit. So when you come, put all of this together, I'm very concerned, and we have budget meetings every month, and to see this now, when we weren't told about it back there, it concerns me. And so we've got to make sure that we're doing everything we can. This council wants to contain costs. We want to balance the budget. And while all these people are doing great things in building, Erie Insurance, you know, those aren't, we're not going to realize the revenues for that for a decade, and in the case of Hammett and St. Vincent, you know, half that revenue. So we have to make sure that we, while I applaud the efforts, and you're doing a great job with transforming Erie and restoring hope, and, and there is the opportunity, we have to do it within the confines of our budget. Thank you.
Bob, I would just, in response, like, you know, we've actually reduced by three the number of employees at City Hall. We haven't increased. We, the, the people we hired were not additions to staff, they were instead of doing something else, so...
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam President?
Yes?
Mayor, I want to thank you very much for taking the time out and presenting the budget and projection to us. First of all, I'd like to say you, thank you for an honest presentation. You've given us some information that we didn't receive in the past, and your foresight in a five-year budget is commendable. What you're doing, the meetings you've had, the meetings you've told us about with the individuals, the planning, et cetera, I think you're doing a fine job. Keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon.
I think, I want to thank the mayor for coming here today, and Paul, thank you for being around here, too. One thing that concerns me, though, and it has over the years, is I still think we have to be a little bit more diligent on making the things work here that haven't been working in the past. And without being specific, I will talk to you about those issues. We don't need any more shortfalls where that's a result of us not doing our job. We're at the point where even a million is important. Like Bob said, a lot of things we're looking at, and the steps council is going to take, hopefully, are looking at the long-range picture. But in the short term, council wants to be assured that everybody that's here at City Hall is rowing the same boat. And that means when I look at some of these numbers, I'm a little concerned that maybe we're not doing our job in certain areas. I'll be specific with you when I meet with you, and I've talked to Paul about it, and I think we're going to have to get involved in a lot of issues. We're going to have to be more proactive with the school district on challenges. Every time we can get a pilot agreement, that's to our advantage. There were some in the past we forgot about, and this council brought it up, and I don't want to see any more of that. And I think before we start going to the public in ways we don't want to, we need to make sure our ship is tightened. And I'll be specific with you when I meet with you, and I've, like I said, I've talked to Paul about this over the years. But I, every time I look in his book, I wonder, are we doing our job properly with everything? I mean, you look around, you see all the building, and you assume everything's been, is doing according to oil, but it's not always. And I will show you some instances where I want to make sure those holes are covered, and, because we have some pretty important stuff coming up that we're going to have to vote on, and it's going to have the long-range prospects of the city at heart, but like Bob said, once again, that's 10 years down the line, and we've got a tough job ahead of us, so I just want to make sure that everybody down here is rowing on the same boat that we all want it to be. With that, thank you.
Sure, and we welcome any input that's going to make the city better, absolutely.
Madam President, once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Paul, for joining us this evening. One thing I do want to, we have discussed this in our finance, meaning that there may be a possible deficit coming up at this year's year-end budget. But with that being said, it could be worse, could be better, but as using the Paul term, historically, every three, two, three, four years, we do have a tax increase that people got to realize also comes from just the cost of doing business as a city. Things go up. The contractual agreements with the labor in the city goes up, unforeseen expenses in equipment, those things do go up, and you got to offset it and do different moves or procedures to offset it. But what we need to possibly do, knowing that we're possibly looking at a million or $1.1 million deficit, just like you said, is maybe we can do some financial cutting or freezing for the last quarter of this year to help offset that a little bit. And there again, it's something that you just can't decide tonight. It would have to be studied a little bit, but maybe by the end of the quarter or the end of this third quarter here, we may come up with some areas that we can just look at our costs and what we can possibly hold off on spending until the absolute necessities, and then maybe that'll offset some of this come year-end. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor Joe, for explaining that to us. I like the idea of the five-year range. Does the health insurance for the city of Erie employees for the upcoming year have anything to do with that?
Yes, that's certainly a part of the benefit expense, and we, with what's going on between UPMC Hammett and St. Vincent's now, we have to make a decision about what our insurance is going to be going forward. That's obviously going to have a huge impact on next year's budget.
Does council have anything with that, too, then?
Absolutely. I believe we've got some meetings scheduled, and I think a couple council members were invited to those meetings, and if not, we'll make sure they were. Was anybody invited to any upcoming meetings on, related to, hmm, okay, well, we'll, we'll get a couple of you invited.
Thank you.
There's like, meeting with five different insurance carriers, each an hour long, and where we're going to hear from them and their proposal. So obviously, four of you can't sit in, but we could have up to three.
Mayor, I would like to thank you and your administration. I think you're doing a fabulous job, and we all have to understand that things happen. You know, we, we can't predict the future, things happen, but I'm sure you're looking into the areas where we need to cut, and, and I'm sure that we will do that to balance out our bu, budget, you know? So I have all faith in you, and you're doing an awesome job, you and your administration.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, I know I already talked, but can I ask one more question, and, and it's a specific one about the, the shortfall in the projected sewer revenue. Is that a, could you just, like, in one or two sentences, sum that up? I mean, it was being overly optimistic, because this isn't the bud, I mean, we're living with the budget from, that the previous administration presented, so could, what happened with the sewer revenue?
I mean, I can't really speak to why it was set at that dollar amount, but we know we're not going to get that much.
Okay.
We could force them to pay it, but then that would be bad financially for them, and I don't want to do that, so...
It's like a domino effect, and it just...
Yes. I think, I guess what I assume is some things didn't happen as they had thought they might happen, like perhaps with some of our surrounding municipalities that use the sewer service and pay towards it, they may have backed off what they decided to get involved with, or something like that. I don't, I don't really know the answer to that. I'm more concerned about what's the solution to the problem that we have right now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam President? Just one other comment. Paul, I know in the past, even though we would be presented with a budget, you would, in the past, have, you're not just looking for one year, you have looked maybe not quite a five-year budget down the road, but you still go with historical or what, as I said, what we've had in the past, and you use those numbers as well as project what we may be seeing in two, three, four years down the road, correct?
Yeah.
And this has been the practice, or your practice?
For the 11 years I've done this.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Okay, Rose, we can proceed.
Okay, Mr. Witherspoon has a presentation he'd like to make at this time.
It's an honor and a pleasure to have the young men of the Eagle Nest Boys Academy with us today, and I'm, I'm very honored to know quite a few of them, but I'm also honored to know the founder and the ladies and gentlemen who provide the education for them, their breakfast, their lunch, and they keep them in line, they're, they're learning new things, and they're going to come up here and recite their creed. It's a beautiful creed. But first, I'd like to ask board member, Mr. Dennis Williams, to come up, please.
This work, this is fine.
Okay, you're the lawyer.
No, no, I'm retired. I was once, I'm happy now. Thank you, Councilman Witherspoon, and members of council. My name's Dennis Williams, and I am a trustee of the Eagles Nest Leadership Corporation that these young people are a part of. It's the brainchild of Bishop Duane Brock, began 30 years ago, and it's coming to fruition. Our purpose is to train inner-city children. An education removes guns from their hands, and we take the at-risk teenagers and we teach them self-respect. We teach them how to write a check. We teach them how to keep a checkbook. We teach them how to show up to work on time. We teach them how to take their kids to daycare. In other words, we're trying to make them responsible adults. And we've had numerous partners. Our first was UPMC. They said, you teach these kids how to come to work, we'll give them a job. Since then, we have placed, presently, we have 117 placements with the various businesses in this town because there's a true need for beginning-level employment. Now, we also have several working as union members for the United Steelworkers, thanks to Tom Hagen's assistance, who are working on this building that came through our program. 70% of the, the young men and women that we place still are working. They're off the streets, they have an income. We have a classroom over on Pennsylvania Avenue, thanks to Bishop Brock. We have a library donated by Dr. David Kozak. We have computers. We have professional teaching volunteers, and we have a, a bus that we use to transport these children. We're getting them off the streets. We have a basketball program run by Councilman Witherspoon. We have a basketball court, and there are apparently 300 young people in this basketball program. We also are in, in partnership with the juvenile court. They send their risk youth to us to go through our program, and we've had such success with them that the juvenile court is now investing financially in us. Because we don't, it doesn't run on fuel, it runs on money. Now, we have expanded to younger kids. We call it the, the African-American Boys Academy. That's these young people here. It's our second class. They're younger than our first group of people, group of students who we were training to work. We're teaching these young men that there's something other than what's going on in the street. We're teaching these young men to be adults. We're teaching them the importance of graduating. We take them on trips. We have a bus. So from nothing, we are doing our best, our best to create graduates, not dropouts, to create adults that are employed, not armed. We're trying to create leaders, not inmates. And this began with Bishop Duane Brock, and we have made some incredible strides. These young people are a perfect example of where we are beginning. And I would like to introduce Bishop Brock, who I, I've known, I knew almost my entire legal career. He's a dear friend, and he's the reason that we're getting guns off the street, because he's, believes in these people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bishop, would you come up, please? Bishop? Come up here. We have a eight o'clock public hearing, so, young men, please come up. Good evening, council and members of the city of Erie. This is the second class of the Eagles Nest African-American Boys Academy. Very quickly, expeditiously, young men, are you listening?
Yes.
Young men, are you listening?
Yes, sir.
Your core values on three, one, two, three?
Innovation, initiation, motivation, articulation, consideration.
I want to hear your creed on three, one, two, three?
I am a part of God. I am a shield of a man's purpose. I am a shield of exceptional values. I am a shield of extraordinary genius. Responsibility is my foundation. Courage is my partner. Faith is my breath of life. I can because God said I can. I am loved because God has made me to be taken in my thinking. I shall pray for my fellow lessons to prepare for hope and refuge. I will do the excellent my full self, justice in my faith, peace in my will, and strength in my pride. I am a part of God.
Young men... Young men, what is your motto?
I am yes, be a king!
Mr. Witherspoon and members of council, we wish to thank you for your time. I want to thank the mayor for his support as one of our original board members, Attorney Dennis Williams. I saw Connie Williams, one of our board members, Fred Rush, one of our board members. We want to thank everyone associated with the African-American Boys Academy. And Mr. Witherspoon, at this time, if we could have the mayor, and I know that I'm taking a little more time, but I'm investing in these young kids. If we could hand them their certificates, I would greatly appreciate that. Angela Vincent, Chief Angela Vincent of the Edinburgh Police Department is our dean of the African-American Boys Academy. Chief Vincent.
Very quickly, we're going to call the young men. I want you to come up and get your certificates. Okay, Alex?
Welcome.
Okay. Darian Jones. Denaz Mikko, Michael. Denari Michael. Sean Quell Peniman. Tavie R. Tate.
The African-American Boys Academy. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Thank you, council. Thank you very kindly. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, young men. Thank you, Bishop. Thank you, Attorney Williams. We will make sure that all the young men will get a copy CD of this presentation.
Bishop Brock, Bishop Brock, I just want to thank you for all that you're doing for our youth in our community. These youth are our future, and my last two words to you are simply beautiful. Thank you.
Never fails. They put a lot of money in this system. You know what the truth is, Jim? If they adjust the mayor's temperature, it screws this one. Hey, Jim, you want me to turn, shut that other door back there?
Mel's on his way down.
We're going to now proceed to hold our public hearing pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance number 80-2005 and of the proper legal advertising. We will hold a public hearing to consider a request for waterfront conditional use as submitted by Kidder-Walker Architecture and Design in conjunction with HANDS for construction of two single-family homes located at 419 and 425 West Second Street. Do you guys need some easels or anything?
I'll just fold them off.
Okay.
He's vanna wait today. I heard that. Or I can be when he presents, sorry. Good evening, Madam President and council members and residents of the City of Erie. My name is Matthew Goode. I'm the president and CEO of Housing and Neighborhood Development Service, more commonly known as HANDS. We're here tonight to ask for your consideration for waterfront conditional use on two properties on West Second Street in the R. West Bayfront neighborhood. Getting to the point of putting plans and specifications together for this property is a culmination of collaborative efforts between the City of Erie Redevelopment Authority that declared several properties blighted, went through the blight removal process of having the properties demolished, and working with our friends at R. West Bayfront Organization and Gannon University, identifying this block along with the efforts around Bayview Park as an effort, a concentration of investment in housing in this neighborhood. So 419 and 425 adjacent lots on West Second Street will be two newly constructed, single-family homes, three bedrooms each. One home will be a fully accessible ADA compliant home. They will be added to the tax rolls. I see that we're later on the agenda talking about pilot agreements, but I always feel that that's important, that the two pilot agreements that you're addressing later this evening will be, all HANDS properties will be on the tax rolls with that, and so will these properties. Mr. Kidder is here with me to talk a little bit more about the technical specifications of the development, but we have gone through the design review process as well as the planning commission to be here before you tonight.
Thank you, Matthew. My name is Jeff Kidder. I'm a partner with Kidder-Walker Architecture here in downtown Erie. If you need my address, it's 201 French Street. We've been working with HANDS on several projects over the years, and the single-family homes, our goal here was to make them fit in and blend in with the neighborhood. As anybody knows, the lower west bayfront area is pretty typical, single-family structures, one, two-story, narrow lots, deep gable front roofs, porches. So we're continuing that language in the new buildings. Did you guys get any handouts or anything on these? No?
We did get a small package.
You did get a small package. So just the context here, just in the neighborhood, these are two existing lots, 41 and 1/4 feet wide each, 165 foot deep, pretty typical in a neighborhood. They're existing structures on adjacent lots, east and west, and the green here are just the lots we're working with, so we're maintaining a setback of the street currently. Again, they have front porches, they're narrow, just like the rest of the buildings, and each one has a driveway. As Matthew said, each home, it's about 1,300 square feet. One's a one-story, 419 is a one-story, 425 is a two-story. The one-story is fully accessible from entrance to restrooms. Each house has one and a half baths and open living area. 419 being one story, the primary facade is this one in upper left, which is the front. Again, it's pretty simple, pretty typical, but all modern construction, two-by-six walls, foam insulation, high-efficiency furnaces, Energy Star lighting, Energy Star appliances. Each structure, they're slab ungrade, no basements, laundry rooms, pretty typical. Dexterior is just vinyl siding, vinyl windows, has full shingled roofs, maintenance-free as possible. And color-wise, we presented our colors to the Design Review and Planning Commission. I have samples if you want to see, but the pictures here pretty much represent the siding color and the windows in trim are white. So that's that one. The two-story house is this one here. Again, the primary facade is upper left, facing the street. Our whole intent is to make it fit in the neighborhood and just look like it's always been there. So there's nothing really too complicated about them. If you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. Have you went into the neighborhood that you want to build those in and talked to the citizens and let them know what you want to do?
We did have, Matthew can address that.
We did. We had a neighborhood event in conjunction with R. West Bayfront. The neighbors were invited in to review the designs prior to our Design Review and Planning Commission meeting. I can't recall the exact date, July, it was in July. We had it on, at the Gannon University St. Joseph House on West Fourth Street. Yes?
Thank you.
Madam President, I like the design. I love the neighborhood. How do you go about choosing who lives there? Do you have like a lottery system? Just, I mean, I know it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, the plan right now, but I think that's a wonderful opportunity for the people to be settled in a nice neighborhood.
We have application criteria, so prospective residents can come to our office or to our website and fill out an application. It is first-come, first-served basis based upon income qualifications as well as a background check and minimum credit score. So we do have application criteria as first-come, first-served, I believe, as all of our properties do.
Thank you.
If I could just add, these will be offered as affordable rentals in conjunction with an award from the City of Erie Home Program, federal money that the city receives for housing programs, as well as the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency.
Thank you so much.
Madam President, first off, I want to thank you for the presentation, and I did have a couple of questions. First question is, what's your construction schedule pending approval of, from the time you get approved until?
So we are waiting for this vote to be over and work on construction documents. We are hoping, well, planning on being under construction in, by early October, and then get it under roof and closed, finish it up over the winter, and have it ready for spring. We're about a five-month, depending on the winter, five or six months project.
Thank you. Madam President, not that it'll make much difference in my decision or vote, but I guess, are there other homes in the neighborhood that are just on the slabs, or they have basements? Is it just a cost issue, or why did we?
Yeah, there are other newer homes built in neighborhood that are on slab. The one that Gannon just built is one that's on slab. It really is a cost and just simplify construction, and it just eliminates space that maybe isn't needed, basements, so we can keep the plans pretty efficient and compact and...
I'm just a basement guy, so.
Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, I understand, but it just, from the cost standpoint, we'd rather put the money in other parts of the house than put it in a basement that really, you know, the tenants may not ever need. So we'd rather spend a little bit more on windows and appliances and LED lighting and stuff like that.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, guys. Can we hear from the people who are against this, if any? Are you against it or for it?
Well, my question is all these guys.
Okay, you can come up here.
My name's Protetep, I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm not for or against the project. I would just like to point out that this is a conditional use. It is what I would call a leverage point that the city has when they review a non-traditional project. This is the kind of project that is critical for the city to exercise all possible opportunities to make improvements within the neighborhood. So I want to make sure that if there are needs with the sidewalk or anything like that, that those be done at this time. This is a good example, and sometimes those things are missed. Otherwise, it sounds like a great project.
Hello, my name is Sydney Zimmerman. I'm a resident of downtown Erie. I actually live just up the street from Prep, and I grew up down there, so this is kind of in my neck of the woods, and...
Oh, your address, huh?
413 West Ninth Street, Upper Apartment. I guess my question is, how are they going, are they going to build both the one-story and the two-story residences? And why choose a one-story over a two-story if a two-story can be done?
Can you guys, one of you guys answer that question, please?
The first answer is yes, both houses will be built simultaneously, and the program, the goal is to have a fully accessible, three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath home for accessibility, and you really just do that on one level.
Disabled accessibility is what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Any accessibility, whether it's anything that's considered accessible. So there's no stairs, and everything's on one level.
And the reason, the reason I bring up that concern is because... And the reason, the reason I bring up that concern is because the one-level houses are very easy to spot as Hands houses or assisted-living houses within these types of neighborhoods, simply because that kind of design isn't as prevalent and is not... It's a newer design, so it's easier to spot, and it doesn't fit in the neighborhood as well as a two-story. So, that's why I'm bringing it up, because I know people who have lived in Hands houses, and it's not always nice to feel like you are something different within the neighborhood. But if there is a purpose behind it, such as making the home more accessible to somebody who maybe has different abilities, then I'm okay with that. So, that's where I stand. Thank you.
If I could just follow up with that, I understand exactly what she's saying about one-stories can look short and squat. This one that we are, have designed, we do have eight-foot ceilings in them, but if you were to look, study the facade, we did make the trusses deeper, and our intent was to make the outside walls about thirteen feet, while they're about twelve feet high, so that we can raise the roof up, and primarily to make it not look so short like she's referring to. So, we are conscious of that, we're trying to solve it as best we can within what we have to work with.
Madam President.
Yes.
Mr. Kidder, since you're up here, go back to Ms. Tefrill's question, are the sidewalks going to be new sidewalks, or are the sidewalks in good shape right now where that isn't part of the project, or how do we stand with that?
The sidewalks right now are in terrible shape, and we are putting new sidewalks in.
Thank you.
You're for, okay.
Well, I'd just like to see that it's great that you're bringing single-family housing into these neighborhoods, and I'd like to...
Name an address.
Oh, excuse me, Michael Keys, thirty-six twelve Reed Street. It's great that they're bringing single-family homes into these neighborhoods and that they're replacing these, the empty lots. But with comment, though, what I would love to see is within the Hands or within their partnerships, that they come up with a model for renting to own, so that when we place people in these neighborhoods, we can permanently place these people in these neighborhoods, and they'll have a stake in the neighborhood, because also when you plant renters into a neighborhood where traditionally most of the people are homeowners, also, you know, that that sometimes is a problem, and so I think that they should come up with a model that permanently settles people into the West Bayfront and the other areas in which they're working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For or against?
Uh, for. So, I'm Anna Franz, I'm speaking on behalf of our West Bayfront, the nonprofit neighborhood improvement organization that works in this area and in partnership with Hands, and speaking very much in support of the project. This project has been, it's part of our comprehensive approach to make improvements throughout the West Bayfront neighborhood, and in particular, in this very near vicinity, which was chosen in part because of the presence of the MLK Center and Bayview Park. The project doesn't stand on its own. It's actually part of a larger set of improvements that we've been working to make since the beginning of 2017. We started with our housing repair grants that we offered to property owners on this particular block by going door-to-door to property owners and making them aware of the availability of those funds. We've worked with the city and the Martin Luther King Center to make improvements to the parking lot. We've worked with residents to improve sidewalks on this block and in the vicinity of this area. It's no coincidence that later on, the agenda for tonight's meeting is a request for a resolution for a grant for Bayview Park, which is half a block from these particular properties. So, I just, I hope that you'll all see the, you know, the overall approach that we're working with many different partners, Hands being, you know, a significant part of that effort, and we're very pleased to see this project get to this point. I'll also just sort of reiterate Mr. Good's conversation about the process that led here in terms of the neighborhood outreach. Hands has been part of neighborhood meetings that we have facilitated since we got going several years ago, and they've attended several meetings in the past year and a half, including that recent meeting at the St. Joseph House of Faith in Action. I haven't heard a single word in opposition to this project. It's only been positive in terms of what they're proposing to do. So, I just want to again, thank you for your consideration of this project.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm speaking for. My name is Candace Baddles. My address is five-oh-five West Fourth Street, and I'm wearing a number of hats as I come to this podium. I'm the Chair of the R. West Bayfront Board, I'm Chair of the Housing and Neighborhood Development Services Board, I'm a resident of that neighborhood at five-oh-five West Fourth Street, and I've worked on the R. West Bayfront project, which these two properties are part of our plan of improving the community since its very initiation. I like to think I planted the seed. Anna and I have walked and went door-to-door and talked with the residents in that area, on the four-hundred block of West Second Street and the surrounding blocks, a number of times. We also had many meetings with the residents of the four-hundred block of West Second Street, where these two buildings are going, and the civic engagement that those neighbors expressed as we sat in homes at the King Center and at the St. Joseph House of Faith in Action was exemplary. They may not come out in crowds at meetings, but they, the residents that live there, that own the homes, a couple of the landlords have, gave us direction on what they wanted to see on their block, and these two houses were part of what they asked for. I, I'm sure most of you have heard of, and many of you have participated or attended events of the R. West Bayfront as the Chair of the Board. I'm asking and inviting you to any other events we have in the future. I also brought with me packets for everyone from, that we handed out at National Night Out, which include a sticker for your freezer, rwestbayfront.org, porch lights on for safety, a number of brochures, and a newsletter. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments before the project? Are there any more comments for the project? Last call, are there any more comments for the project? Okay, that closes out our hearing. Thank you.
You'll have to hear from the zoning officer.
Oh.
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed members of council. My name is Jake Welsh, Chief Zoning Officer and Secretary to the City of Erie Planning Commission. Here today to read the recommendation of the Planning Commission regarding the proposed project. Show my age. City of Erie Planning Commission, at their regular meeting on July seventeenth, twenty-eighteen, reviewed a waterfront conditional use application for two proposed single-family dwellings located on adjacent lots at four-nineteen and four-twenty-five West Second Street, submitted by Hands. The properties are located in a WR waterfront residential district. Per the requirements of the PA Municipality's Planning Code, all conditional use proposals, shall be presented to the governing body for their approval. After reviewing the application, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends that council approve the two proposed single-family dwellings. The Planning Commission recommends that building permits should be granted based on the grounds that, one, all zoning requirements have been addressed, two, this is an appropriate use for this property, and three, the Design Review Committee approved the designs of the proposed dwellings. City of Erie Design Review Committee, at their meeting on July seventeenth, twenty-eighteen, voted four to zero to approve the design of the dwellings as consistent with Section three-oh-six of the City of Erie Zoning Ordinance, Conditional Uses, Waterfront Districts. Respectfully submitted.
Any questions, council?
Madam President, I just wanted to thank you, Jake, for all the work that you and your office did, being very thorough. Thank R. West Bayfront for being involved in Hands, for cooperating with R. West Bayfront. It's refreshing to see, and it's good to know that this project is part of something much bigger for that neighborhood. So, thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that closes out our hearing. And I'm going to be calling for repository sales. Is there anyone here for repository sales? Are there anyone here for repository sales?
Absolutely.
Last call for repository sales. That brings us to citizens to be heard.
Jason Burnell, forty-one thirty-one McClellan Avenue, Erie, Pennsylvania, one-six-five-one-zero. First and foremost, I'd like to send my condolences and thoughts to the Erie Police Department, City of Erie, and Officer Conway's family and friends at this time. Thank you, Officer Conway, for your service to the city. And Mayor Schenberg, I and my father would love to give you Erie PA's Old Glory, the thirty-by-sixty-foot American flag for the funeral procession for Officer Conway. You have my contact information, my father and I would like to hand it to the chief so we can get two ladder trucks for the funeral processions. That's my donation to the funeral. Good evening, Mayor Schenberg Administration, Erie City Council, Madam President, and fellow Erieites. The time to heal has begun with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Attorney General's Office release of that report yesterday in Harrisburg. I ask you this, the truth is out on how we should be treating all children, regardless where they go to school, who they love, and how they pray. Here is the letter I promised you from the PSEA in support of banning gay conversion therapy. Should we allow conversion therapy in the City of Erie to abuse our children? I say no. If the LGBT youth in public schools get bullied and harassed according to this funded report by the Erie Public Schools, which I have attached, it says that the students are getting bullied, thirty-three percent in high school and forty-one percent in grade school. And the report yesterday indicates that there's abuse from the clergyman. So, regardless where they go, this type of conversion therapy is wrong, and they should not have that worry of conversion therapy on their minds as they sit in, let's just say, St. Luke's, or Erie High School, or Middle School, or any school in the City of Erie. This billion will allow our children to thrive, to love, and to pray in a free society. If we are trying to keep our children safe and to keep them from leaving Erie, this will be a small part in our bigger picture, transforming Erie according to the master plans like Refocused Erie. We should not let our children live, we should let, excuse me, sorry, we should let our children live their truth and not in fear of judgment or discrimination. That goes with us adults. How we treat one another is paramount in any human interaction, period. It begins with us, adults, setting the values, the principles, and standards on how we treat one another. This goes right back to my point whenever I referred to city council about the golden rule and social exclusion. I just attended the Erie Public School District meeting today, and I gave them the saved documents that I have done ever since January of two thousand and eighteen about the municipal equality index, about the City of Reading's ordinance, and the report that they funded. Recently, I was at the Erie Insurance for the Urban Land Institute presentation for their findings when they visited our flagship city. One of the items that stood out to me was the "we over me" theory. We over me. It's time to pass gay conversion therapy ban. I don't want another Matthew Shepard or Mr. Comente happening in Erie. I don't want another child to be abused, regardless with faith, regardless of what school they go to. They should be able to live, thrive, excel, and not worry about this. So many cities across the Commonwealth have passed this, and I know you have it in your hearts, parents, guardians, let's step up. Speak for your children. Speak for those who believe in themselves, and I don't want to live with the torturous practice of conversion therapy. There's going to be email that I'm going to be sending you, please look it over. It's a detailed email about Forty-third and McClellan. It's about the sidewalks, speed limits, and concerns. There was a hit-and-run accident there on Monday afternoon. A hit-and-run. There's a lot of problems at that quarter, and when I'm done and I'm going to sit down, I'm going to hit send, and you'll get the email in the proper departments. Thank you, and now it's time to celebrate us and celebrate Erie.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Dorothy Jordan, thirty-four thirty-six West Tenth Street. I'd also like to extend my sympathy to the family of the fallen officer. I'm here tonight to support this community's effort to save and preserve the lifeline across the CSX railroad tracks known as the McBride Viaduct. The McBride Viaduct is here for a reason. Maybe the viaduct should have been named for the child who was killed by a speeding CSX train while trying to cross the tracks. Maybe if the viaduct had been named for the child who was crushed by a speeding train, it would be a sacred memorial to the child whose life was obliterated in a matter of seconds. We can never forget the reason it was built in the first place. The viaduct is there because a child lost her life trying to cross four sets of railroad tracks. The viaduct represents a place of contrition and sorrow. It is a sacred symbol to the memory of the child whose life was snuffed out by a speeding train, a place where the community can pay respects to the child's memory. It will be a moral violation to destroy it. You are making a life and death decision that will haunt you to your dying day and beyond if and when another child is killed. You cannot deny the part you're playing by your refusal to protect our children. You are gambling with the lives of this community's children. The East Side Bridge services this community's most vulnerable and powerless citizens, families and children living in abject poverty. Who allowed the slow, systematic, and intentional destruction of the viaduct? Someone needs to be held accountable. We deserve answers. This was a civil dereliction of fiduciary duty, criminal if another child is killed. Is this not a case of obvious systemic institutional racism? If this isn't blatant racism, then why was there no question in the funding of bridges in Glenwood Hills or Frontier Park? There was no question or lack of will to fund these bridges, which, as it happens, both are located in some... both are located in some of the city's wealthiest neighborhoods. This is not a tactical or social issue. The McBride Viaduct is a moral issue. This is a racial issue. This is a civil justice issue. We live with systemic institutional racism in this country and in this city. It is no accident that Erie was named the worst city in the country for African-Americans. The mayor has deceived this community, going door-to-door using his best down-home "Ashok's Charm." He misled and deceived those to whom he promised a public hearing. In business, this is called bait and switch. It is illegal and a flagrant abuse of power. The poor people of the East Side were lured into believing our mayor would honor his word. The foolish idea of destroying this sacrosanct and sacred piece of Erie history, this example of historical architecture, shows a senseless lack of vision, a lack of good judgment, and a lack of simple common sense. Erie CPR will transform the McBride Viaduct into a beautiful, wonderful parkway, an asset to the City of Erie, a safe place for the Erie community and the pride of Erie's East Side. In his Easter message, Pope Francis said, "Do not be silent in the face of injustice. If ever there was a case of injustice, this is it." Tonight, we witnessed a display of what encouragement and caring can produce in our African-American children, and I am begging you to think more than twice before you tear down the McBride Viaduct, an icon in this city. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And to our county, City Council, and to our President, Madam President, and to our Mayor, Mayor Schenberg, Charles Mock, pastor of Community Missionary Baptist Church, and that's at 10th and German. My address is 648 East 43rd Street, Erie, PA. Let me first congratulate Bishop Brock and the Academy, and the role Brother Witherspoon and others have played in making this presentation of children tonight, one that provides a source of inspiration during a time of tremendous angst giving all that is going on in our country. And secondly, I want to stand to ask for support of the Community Benefits Agreement, and I know that with business development in any city, there's always benefits to the community in terms of jobs and increased revenue. But I'm asking this City Council to receive the recommendations that will enhance a very public and written Community Benefits Agreement that will take those benefits to another level and to people who might not otherwise benefit from all of the growth in this city. It's my understanding that there are ways in which we can enhance the community through additional visions of inclusion, and we hope that you would take very seriously those recommendations coming to you from Erie County United. I also represent the NAACP as chairman of the Religious Concerns Committee, and we in the African-American Concern Clergy also want to continue to ask this City Council to think seriously about the viaduct and to say that it's not too late to have an official public hearing. We understand that there are changes going on right now under our nose. We know that there's continued progress in terms of the demolition, and we also know that this situation is a court situation right now, waiting to hear from a judge. And so I would ask, on behalf of the African-American Concern Clergy, the NAACP, Community Plus Respect, better known as CPR, Erie County United, we would ask that you would have, at your next meeting, a progress report on the demolition, so that at least the community can know what changes are taking place, so that this community could know and receive information that we can respond to. And I make these statements in line with a very progressive-minded mayor who is doing all he knows to do to create a new future with the assistance of the City Council and so many other business partners in the community. So I make these recommendations on behalf of a community of choice. And so we choose to believe that we need greater transparency so that we can make more informed decisions. And we heard on the news tonight, and we continue to hear on national news and state news, how the lack of transparency is creating all kinds of problems when it comes to governance. And so this is really important, not just from a national perspective, but a city perspective, where if we really want people to come out and vote, we need to know what to vote for and why we're voting the way we're voting. Transparency is one of the goals and objectives of this mayor. He's done a great job of making that known, and therefore, in the context of his vision of a community of choice, in the context of his vision of greater transparency in how we do governance, we call for a Community Benefits Agreement with conversation. We call for an additional session in which this City Council can help us to understand present demolition efforts in the context of a court case. So I thank you for what you're doing. I thank you for considering, from my mind and from my heart, what would be, I think, in the best interest of a new vision of the City of Erie that is more inclusive and also more diverse. Thank you.
Madam President, Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Mary DiTullio. I live at 4356 Miller Avenue. I am a retired Certified Registered Nurse Practitioner. I read one time that silence in the face of evil is evil itself. God will not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak, and not to act is to act. On May 8th, the Water Authority accepted bids for hydrofluoric acid for the purpose of water fluoridation. Hydrofluoric acid is actually the waste product of fertilizer. The material safety data sheet in your packet states it is a toxic poison, yet the citizens of Erie are being forced to swallow it and bathe in it. Over the past year, I have contacted the Water Authority, its Board of Directors, and many government officials regarding the safety of hydrofluoric acid, and it still remains a health concern. I have had the opportunity to teach our young children in the City of Erie School District the Mr. Yuck Program. As an educator in that program, we were instructed to make sure that the children understood that the signal word "danger" and that the pictogram of the skull and crossbones on products indicated it was an extremely toxic, poisonous substance. Medical research shows that hydrofluoric acid is a neurotoxin that causes neurodevelopmental disabilities, including autism, ADD, ADHD, dyslexia, dementia, Alzheimer's, and other cognitive impairments. It is now known that it is a contributing factor in thyroid, kidney, and heart disease, and it is also proven to be even more harmful to African-Americans. And that concerns me, given the presentation of the wonderful young men that we saw here this evening. Approximately the end of March this year, the Evening News spoke of Erie's health ranking, and of 67 counties in Pennsylvania, Erie ranked a deplorable 56. It's no wonder, though, because we're being deliberately poisoned on a daily basis. I hope that you would all agree that the practice of water fluoridation is unsafe in every way, and immediately disband the Water Authority to keep them from further harming the citizens of Erie. Follow the example of Balfont's Borough Manager, Ralph Stewart, and the many other cities across the country, and put an end to this horrific crime. If that doesn't happen, it's proof that fluoride is working. Martin Luther King once said, "To ignore evil is to become accomplice to it." Thank you.
My name is Freda Tefra. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street. I'm a Certified Orientation and Mobility Specialist. I have always been opposed to the demolition of the viaduct. However, as early as September of 2016, I convened an onsite meeting with city engineering, members of the PennDOT staff, and possibly even somebody from Federal Highways, myself, Adam Trot, and my friend and her guide dog. My concern was for the safety of the crossing at 12th and the Bayfront Connector, and the condition and the safety of the walk along on the north side there. And as Adam Trot will say, that kind of improvement that has been done on the north side of 12th Street probably would not have happened if I hadn't brought it up. So I'm going to bring something else up. I don't want to see the viaduct demolished, but since you folks seem dead-set to do it, I want you to ask yourselves, what plan do you have in place to provide travel training for a very unsophisticated group of pedestrians and children about how to use a sophisticated intersection at 12th and the Bayfront Connector? If you, anybody who goes to the Philharmonic concerts downtown and watches the suburban people try to cross State Street during the leading left turn portion and watch them run across the street as cars are turning left, you'll know that they don't understand they're not supposed to be crossing then because that's not a pedestrian interval. Most of the people who are using the viaduct don't encounter that kind of pedestrian intersection, and we have children. What kind of plan do you have in place to ensure travel training and to work with the school district to ensure travel training? That's the area of the potential fatality I'm worried about. What are you going to do if you persist to demolish the viaduct to ensure safety? One of the things that I believe that Reverend Mock is talking about in terms of changing is this invisible force field that they're going to build along the walkway on the Bayfront Connector. Nobody has seen that design as yet, and the reason why they've added it late in the process is because so many of us persisted in saying, what are you going to do about the snow, about the rain splash, the air and the water pollution? I'm also concerned about the Quality of Life Ordinance which you folks passed and how it's going to be equitably handled in this city. I am concerned that we need to make sure that when business, commercial, and church and educational properties are handled in such a way as to make it difficult for pedestrians because of poor snow removal, snow berms from driveways that make it impossible to walk, poor sidewalks, encroaching and overhanging vegetation, and poor sidewalk condition, that businesses, churches, and private educational facilities also are held to the kind of account that you expect the residences to be. I am concerned that our council members, and some of them are exceptional, but some of them fail to respond to emails. I call their phone numbers and I get full voicemail boxes. This is my cellphone. A council member said, "You can text me." I'm not the only one who has an unsophisticated cellphone. It is very difficult to send a text with any kind of information. Our council members get $6,000 a year. They ought to make themselves accessible through their voicemail, through their email. They should respond. As I mentioned before, the city has leverage points at the time of conditional use permits, rezones, special uses, all these height variances. I don't believe that they're making adequate use of these leverage points to require actual changes in the project to benefit all the people. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jack Perry. I live at 1543 East 38th Street, and I'm here to report a problem at the Quickville at 1588, right across the street from me. They have these vents, the gas vents, that kick on, and they're vibrating the whole neighborhood. And, you know, I thought it was the stereos and everything, but it isn't. It's these gas vents that are kicking on, and they're shaking my house and everything. So I just wanted to complain about that, that's all, and see if, it seems to me it's dangerous, you know? Vibration like that is not good for machinery. You know, it could loosen wires, or, you know, it vents gas, you know, so the tanks don't blow up, the ones in the ground, so. That's about it. I traced it back at 3 o'clock about four days ago, you know, something was vibrating and woke me up. So I went out of the house, stood in front of my stoop, and I followed it all the way over. And then on occasions, when I was buying, you know, milk or whatever over there, I could feel the floor shaking. So, I don't know, I think it's a dangerous situation, plus, you know, it's bothering a lot of people, you know, the neighbors in the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say. Do I have to stay here for the whole time?
Madam President, I know this isn't typical, but may I just ask one question? Is this a new, you've lived there for a while?
I've lived there since 92.
And this is new? This hasn't happened before? Has it always been?
Well, it hasn't happened. They put new tanks in in 2014. I got pictures that, I went back to my photo album. And, you know, since they put it in, they've been over there like twice to repair these things. You know, they have a whole crew that comes in there, and it doesn't...
This just started to like, like this?
No, no, this has been going on for probably, I cut my hedges down, but...
Because you're the first person that I've heard say something about, so that's why I'm asking.
Well...
Thank you. No, we'll look into it. Thank you.
Yeah, I hope so, because it seems like it's a dangerous situation, because any, when you get high-pressure vibration like that, it could knock electrical connections and stuff like that, and there could be a major accident. And plus, it wakes me up at 3 o'clock, 5 o'clock, it's like it's on a cycle, you know, when it clears the vents, so they don't blow up. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, other city employees. My name is Andrew Kapper. I live at 513 Peach Street. I'd like to talk about the state of the city. I have recently moved back from the City of Cincinnati with my master's degree from the University of Cincinnati in Urban Planning. I have just been driving around and walking around, and I'd like to say the state of the city is deplorable. I walked in about an hour, but after the meeting started, when I heard that the city had a $1 million deficit, $1.1 million deficit. I have studied the city budget in programs, in my master's program, and I'd just like to bring up one thing that happened two years ago, and that is that EMTA debacle with the city and the county. The city spends approximately $375,000 to $400,000 a year, and, you know, if you would have taken care of that two years ago, you wouldn't have this deficit that is as much now. I have walked around my old neighborhood. It looks like crap. There are, the streetlights do not work, the sidewalks are horrendous, they are not functioning. I am concerned about how the city is still trying to own everything. I understand there's the Erie Water Authority and Erie Redevelopment Authority. How about a Erie Sewer Authority, an Erie Garbage Authority, or Erie Park Authority? I am concerned about how when I now go to bed on, let's say, Saturday night, I live downtown, the music is still playing at 4:00 in the morning. downtown, the music is still playing at 4:00 in the morning. I can't get sleep, I can't do work. I work at Erie Insurance. My parents would like to come back, but let alone they can't, because they don't want to see what the city looks like. They've traveled up here many times in the past 11 years. I left 11 years ago. They are shocked and appalled. Where they used to live, it is horrendous. There's crime everywhere. I understand it's going down, but I really can't see that when I drive through neighborhoods that look like a Third War country. Erie looks like a Third War country. I know that sounds wrong for me to say, but I've lived in Cincinnati, Ohio, and it looks better. They have three CDCs. I understand that EDDC is trying to do the same thing, and my God, I hope they can. Because in about a few years, if I want to, I'm probably going to leave Erie if nothing honestly changes. The city has taken on too much, it seems to be. The county needs to take on a little bit more. How about we regionalize some stuff? It's the Erie region, it's not Erie city versus Erie county. The city is in the county, therefore it's a regions problem. And that's all I have to say.
Good evening. I'm Martha Wachuku, 711 Myrtle Street, Floor 2. I'd like to counter what the gentleman before me was saying by saying, "Yes, it shouldn't be on all of you. It should be, the responsibility of our city's future should be spread out to some of these corporations that take up space in our city." So, in our continued efforts towards equitable development in Erie, we have brought a few folks here with us tonight to speak to why they care about socially conscious redevelopment. Many of us have come to council over the past year to talk about community benefit agreements, or CBAs. Using CBAs as a tool for equity is not a one-and-done act. It is a process that creates a culture within cities where citizens are allowed more space for input and benefits from the community's revitalization. Myself and members of ECU, Erie County United, and a few of our coalition, community benefit agreements, coalition partners, are here tonight to support members of council who support CBAs. We have here again our proposed enhancements for LERTA. I believe most of you have received either a physical copy or an email copy. If not, we will provide you more copies later. And I ask that you take the time to read it if you haven't already. But just in case, following me are members of Erie County United who will read portions of our proposal for the public's benefit. So I will start. Job standards for projects receiving LERTA. Any improvements or new construction of residential, commercial, or industrial properties valued at more than $1 million shall meet the following criteria to be eligible for LERTA.
My name is Michaela Alicia, 4333 Crosswinds Drive, 16506. For construction jobs, first, 15% of man-hours shall be worked by residents of the target area. Target employees shall be at least 10% of man-hours for each trade. Second, all workers must be paid a local prevailing wage. Third, contractors must meet the responsible contracting standards for construction workers. And this applies to all contractors and subcontractors. Second, for all end-use jobs, they must first, 51% of all jobs shall be worked by residents of the target employment area. Second, all workers to be, must be paid at least 175%, which comes out to about $13, of the state minimum wage. And third, employers must meet the responsible contracting standards for end-use jobs. This applies to property owners, contractors, subcontractors, lesses, and sublesses. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie PA, 16506. Esteemed council members, Madam President, and Mayor Joshi. Some elegant words I've heard this evening about the community benefit agreements. Obviously, I've been speaking in favor of those for, seems like, many years now. And we hope that you strongly consider those, and we hope very shortly to put an ordinance together for you so that you can look at it for the city. As you know, I am also for a public hearing for the viaduct. Again, some elegant words. Let the people's voice be heard. That's all. And regarding LERTA, we love the developments going on, and we like some of the things that LERTA may offer, except there are some things that are being suggested that may be heinous, such as offering LERTA below the bayfront. Don't know why. Developers are going to develop. Why give them 10 years when they're already getting incentives to develop down there? So I want to continue speaking about LERTA. Construction contractors and end-users must report certified payroll as part of the annual application process using LCP Tracker or other programs determined by the city. And any entity failing to meet these requirements on their annual application will not be eligible to participate in the LERTA program. Number four, construction contractors and end-users must comply with the Fair Chance Hiring Policy. And number five, the city will post completed annual applications online within 30 days of filing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President. My name is Sydney Zimmerman. Again, I live at 413 West 9th Street, Upper Apartment. I too am here to read off some of our proposed changes to LERTA, but before I do so, first and foremost, I'd like to say that I just came from a Ron DeNicolò event, and regardless of if you're a Republican or a Democrat, you know, one of the things he brought up was making common sense changes, having common sense solutions. And for a lot of the issues that we've heard this evening, I just want to make sure that people aren't forgetting that beautiful tool of common sense, whether it's in regard to safe passageway for pedestrians, especially for those who can't afford any other mode of transportation, whether it's for our issue with our sewer bill not being balanced and causing our budget to go out of whack, you know, whether it's for an issue that I know Ms. Freda has brought up before, that, you know, having a community calendar where we can reference what is going on with our government so that we can be sure to come to study sessions that are planned ahead of time, a place to access what's going on in our community so that we can engage in it. I just want to remind everybody to use their common sense in looking at issues so that we don't try to come up with these solutions that are fandangled and based off of, well, as long as this works just right, and this, and that, and so on and so forth. If we can just attack a problem with a common sense solution, let's try to do that as often as possible. Oh, and in regard to study sessions, I do have some questions that I'm going to be sending all the members of City Council, regardless of if you were there on Thursday or not, as well as Mr. Zimmerman at Code Enforcement, so that we can try to address some of the issues that were brought up there and just see where we stand. Thank you. In regard to LERTA, I'm heading the Responsible Contracting Section. Projects receiving LERTA must adhere to the following, and this is what we're asking for in regard to changes. Construction contractors and subcontractors, they must be fully licensed and bonded. They must have no wage or hour violations for the past three consecutive years. They must provide OSHA 10-hour safety training. They must participate in ERISA or Joint Labor Management Training Program, an example, Certified Apprenticeship Program. They must offer health insurance. They must offer health insurance. We're talking about construction work here. People, they're putting their bodies on the line for us, so they must have health insurance. Provide all benefits of employment to their workforce, including social security, workers' comp, and unemployment insurance. And they must comply with all other federal and state regulations, including NLRA, OSHA, family medical leave, and FLSA. Thank you for your time, guys. And gals.
Thank you.
Michael Keyes, 3612 Reed Street, Erie PA. I stand with Erie County United in support of CBAs and in support of a modification to any LERTA legislation that comes from this desk. But as we started our session today, we found out that we were over $1 million in the red. And it just seems like people are throwing common sense solutions around. One of the common sense solutions, in my opinion, would be to not expand LERTA to the bayfront. I was at the study session when Mr. Scott rolled out his program, and he said that he would pay taxes. And so if the proprietor stated that he would pay taxes, I see no reason why we would grant any laws or things for that area which would keep them from paying the taxes which they said that they would pay. And the reason why it's important is the GAF property at full, once it's fully developed, they say that would be $6 million in revenue. And the Scott property, fully developed, will be between $4 and $6 million in revenue for the city, county, and the school district to split. And so when you look at projections, and some people try and say long-term projections, but if we're already in the red, I think it's common sense that we collect the money that is due us now, that the developers said that they would willingly pay. And so I think that that's one way that we can see that in the projection over 10 years that we will not have another shortfall, just by that one common sense modification. And so I also believe that the quality of life, I went over it, and I missed the study session, but I hope there are common sense modifications being made to that document, because the document as it stands, stands to be unfriendly to small businesses, unfriendly to a lot of the community who just do things the way they do them, and it's, now they're going to be penalized. And I will say on the record, I am for code enforcement, and I am for common sense modifications to things that make things easier. But what I believe is, what we need is community. When someone says, "No one has mowed the lawn on the corner all year and it's two feet high, yet they walk by it with their lawnmower every day," I just don't understand. A lot of our issues that we have about our quality of life are really community issues, and we can address them in a neighborly way. And that's what I believe is the best way to improve our quality of life, is by improving our hospitality and improving our neighborhood networks and just actively getting out and meeting our neighbors. Thank you.
Madam President, City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name's Neil Woods. I live at 716 Sassafras, 16501, the poorest zip code in the state of Pennsylvania. I am here also to talk about LERTA and CBAs, and I'm also going to talk about CBAs in another regard. But first of all, to finish up on the modifications we would like to see to the LERTA ordinance, I'm going to talk about, and that would be on projects that are over $1 million. The last section is the Fair Chance Hiring Policy. Contractors and end-users on all projects receiving LERTA shall implement and maintain a fair chance hiring policy that removes the criminal history question from the employment application based on the following. One, consideration of arrests not leading to a conviction, annulled, expunged, or pardoned convictions, convictions for summary offenses, and convictions that do not relate to an applicant's suitability for employment is prohibited. Two, this policy shall not affect positions in which a criminal conviction makes an applicant ineligible under law. Three, this policy shall not apply to employment positions responsible for the safeguarding or security of people or property, law enforcement, or those involving contact with vulnerable populations. Now, my other comments about CBAs has to do with something I just brought to my attention the other day, and that's leverage points. And a very smart man said, "Compensatory measures for consideration of variances." What do we get? And I'm referring to, in your New Business Items 4 and 5, where St. Vincent's wants to close off an alley, and UPMC wants an easement. What are we getting? Pat on the back? Thank you very much. Our billion-dollar industries are now going to make a little bit more because of your cooperation? What are the people of Erie getting back out of it? And on that note, thank you all. Have a great evening.
Good evening, Madam President and Council, Mayor, and Solicitor, and Controller. You always forget about her over here. My name is Curtis Jones, Jr., 2204 Plum Street. Just want to take a moment, it's a kind of unusual position. I've sat through many lengthy citizens-to-be-here, but never had to stand through them. And so you should value the seat that you're sitting in, it's much more comfortable up there. I want to acknowledge Bishop Brock and the work that he has done and others are doing in collaboration with him, whether being on staff or serving through giving to the work that he's doing at the, in that area. Just the whole campus has kind of been developed there, and the Learning Center as well. Bishop Brock was one of my teachers in high school. That's his claim to fame, that's what I want to tell him, that he taught me. But one of the things he always, he was exemplified through these young people, these young men, the mantra was, "Always be able to respectfully and intelligently articulate your position." And 25 years later, I still use that and try to live by that motto as well. I did not come here to speak about any of these issues, although I think all of them are very relevant and very important and are very significant. And I think the right to free speech and the five minutes that each citizen has is important. I think it's even much more important to find ways to be involved and engaged in the actual conversation by decision-makers. And I don't just mean here. Finding ways for these community groups and community activists to be in, earlier in the process, not looking to get something on the back of a process. And so I think that's something that needs to happen. But I will say something about fluoride, real quick. I don't know how this would work, I don't know what the process would be. I've done actually some research accidentally about fluoridation, and sometimes, my mom used to say, "Just keep it simple." And I remember taking a little pink pill. Some of you are my age, I'm 42. You take the little pink pill, you line up before you go to lunch, and you get your little, out of a metal can, and you take one. But there were a couple of kids in that, that never got in the line because their parents didn't give them permission to receive fluoride. And so now we are, we have been for years fluoridating our water, and none of us are giving permission, but we're all receiving. So maybe just something to think about and do a little bit more research and see what's real and what needs to happen to keep our water clean and pure, but without, or with the minimal contrary adverse benefits, or, excuse me, issues for our bodies as citizens. The real reason that I came today is to speak on an issue under New Business, number two, a resolution sponsored by Councilman Melvin Witherspoon, asking for the proper city officials to- to designate the corner of East 8th and Parade Street as Pastor Robert L. Gaines Jr.'s Way. Many of you that have known me, I was serving on council for 12 years, I'll tell you a quick story, bros, I don't know, I don't have extra minutes anymore, so just make sure you know you have the timer going. But I would always give a prayer before the moment of silent meditation. And that wasn't my brainchild. Pastor Gaines was my pastor at that time, in January 2, 2006, I was up, sitting in Mr. Witherspoon's seat, I think, and gave my speech of winning my first election, you know, Mayor Schimber, and I said, "I thank my higher power," because I was really involved in my faith and church, but I didn't know what church and state, the balance, and should you say God, and should you... So I said, "My higher power," I figured I was neutral enough that nobody'd be offended. And I got a phone call at about 12:30 that night, and it was Pastor Gaines. And he said, "Curtis, I just was there at your thing, and I was at the ceremony, and did you thank God for what you did, and what He did for you, and all the people?" And I said, "Yes, sir." I said, "I thank my higher power." And he said, "Well, who is your higher power?" Like, he gave me the business. And he was that kind of a person to be able to have the courage to hold you accountable in areas where you felt like you should be held accountable. But that's what prompted those prayers. From that next meeting, my first meeting on, there was always a moment of prayer, and that was from him. So we, for 12 years, part of his legacy was that he infused that in me, and we participated in that in his chambers. Whether it be the Blue Coats Program that he was significant in initiating and working, that's still continuing to work today, whether it's all the other work in the school district, the way that corner on 8th and Parade has changed when the ministry moved in, it was a horrific space, a lot of crazy and unsavory activity was happening, but that corner became a safe haven, serving lunches, and giving food, and doing so many great things there in that portion of our community. And so I just wanted to stand here and speak in favor of this resolution passing to recognize and designate East 8th and Parade Street Pastor Robert L. Gaines Jr. Way. In anything that, in any way that I can help make that happen, I would be honored to do that. So thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Hi, my name is Cole Shenley. I live at 2621 Jackson Avenue. I'm here as a member of Erie County United to speak about community benefits agreements. I am speaking in support of them, of course. We hear a lot today, and in the news, about the stakeholders of Erie, and that usually is a reference to the largest players, whether that's Erie Insurance, Gannon, UPMC, whatnot. We don't hear enough about the people who live in this city, who work in this city, who work for those corporations, who work for those organizations, and about what they are getting. We're asking for community benefits agreements, because we are asking for material benefits for the people who live in this city, so that they don't have to worry about where their next meal is going to come from, if they can keep a roof over their family's head. The mayor has talked about family sustaining jobs, but I want to know what kind of wages we're talking about. If you're willing to fight for $15 an hour minimum wage, I'm right there with you, but I'd like to know that you support that, and not just, not empty rhetoric about family sustaining jobs. It's a catchphrase, and there needs to be real material benefits behind that. We're asking for, to look at these people and do something for them. I was out canvassing for Governor Wolf two days ago, talking to people in neighborhoods in this city. I was talking to a young man who worked 70 hours a week to try to make ends meet in this city, and he was like, "I support Governor Wolf, but I don't have the time to really look at the news, because I'm so busy at my jobs, just trying to get by." How do we have people in this city who are working 70 hours a week just to survive? That's awful. It should not be. So I'm asking you to please consider community benefits agreements, please consider helping the citizens of Erie, and raising them up, and not just look at what the stakeholders are doing, not just looking at the Innovation District, or Radius Co-op, or any of these places that, you know, talks a big game. Look at what the people, the people in these neighborhoods need. Thank you for your time.
Kevin Bostefka, 722 East Grandview, in the city. So I was happy to hear people speaking in favor of the viaduct tonight. It's not a dead issue, the viaduct is still standing. I know the word "safety" is always central with that issue, and I know the lights are still off, so I can't imagine it being too safe crossing that in the dark. I thought they were supposed to be on, so just a reminder of that. And then in regards to, you know, sort of the main topic of citizens-to-be-heard tonight are community benefits agreements and LERTA. And, you know, I remember last fall, when an article was published from 247 Wall Street about Erie being the worst city in America to live in as African-Americans, and there's a lot of statistical data to support that. It wasn't an opinion thing, it was a numbers-based study. And people were outraged appropriately by that article, and there was a big meeting at the St. James AME Church, and there was a, a lot of people in this room were there that night, and we were trying to come up with solutions. And that night, the topic of community benefit agreements was put out there as a real solution. And so I've been watching since then to see where things go. And, I mean, it's summer now, softball season for me, which is something I like to focus on at a game tonight. But what I've been seeing, you know, is a lot of support for downtown businesses, which, you know, to me is just helping the people who need it the least. And community benefits agreements speak to the opposite end of that. You know, so at what point here are we going to start putting things on the table that do benefit, you know, poor people in the city? You know, and black and white. But given that article, I mean, obviously, you know, race is class, and there's a lot of poverty in that community. I mean, it's getting on election season, I've been knocking doors the last couple of weeks myself, probably, you know, 200 doors between East 8th and East 14th Street, between Parade and Brandis. And, you know, I'm talking to them about who you want to vote for, trying to encourage them to vote Democrat. And they want to vote Democrat, but Democrats need to start acting like Democrats, you know? And when we're putting business interests first, that's not, to me, what the basis of the Democratic Party is supposed to be for. You know, we have people in Washington DC giving tax cuts, you know, to billionaires and corporations. That's not the Democratic way, all right? So I think everyone on council is a Democrat, I think the mayor's a Democrat, county executive's a Democrat, so let's start acting like Democrats. Thank you.
Amen.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Rose, Teresa. I've been up here before, I talked a little bit about community benefit agreements. I've been working on this issue. The first time I heard about...
Name and address.
Veronica Rexford, 4124 West Ridge Road. I started working on community benefit agreements with now Councilman Andre Horton prior to his election. He is the first person I heard mention community benefit agreements. And I've had an education in all of those issues, and some aspects of community planning since that time. When I was here about a month ago, I talked about something that I read recently, and this is a report by the Urban Institute, put out in April of 2018, called "Inclusive Recovery in U.S. Cities." I believe that I've seen evidence from council and from the administration that being inclusive is a priority, that it's important to all of you, that growth is also important. I'm not against development, I just believe that it needs to be equitable. This report states that "A decade after the start of the Great Recession, economic recovery in the U.S. has been uneven, not only across cities and regions, but also within them. This is a city that has not traditionally had the high ups and the low, low downs. We seem to be chugging along. However, the recovery from 2008 has been difficult. In cities that have been left behind by the national recovery, or continue to lose ground, local leaders are increasingly linking economic development to inclusion goals, to ensure that all residents can contribute to turning around the local economy, and share the benefits when economic fortunes shift. Across all types of cities, local leaders are beginning to recognize that economic growth does not automatically lead to inclusion, rather intentional strategies are needed. In other words, the rising tide does not lift all boats without intervention." I'm here as the Secretary of the NAACP. I'm here as somebody who's been working with the East Side Grassroots Coalition since it got started in 2016. And someone who is really concerned that we not give away the keys to the city when it comes to development. There is a way to go about doing it that is inclusive, and there are ways that go about doing it that leaves people behind, and I don't want to see that. And I want to make one other very brief point. I've made a lot of observations over the last several years that Erie is adverse to We don't like pushback, a lot of leadership, business, government. We don't like protesting, we really don't like people pushing back. We've seen what's happened in the news recently, people are afraid to believe, they don't take things to leadership. What this has done to this community in terms of what's happened to children is unconscionable. We have to be able to embrace that our whole community gets better when we embrace dissent, when we listen to the voices that might not be saying what we want to hear. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Kaley, 1146 West 23rd Street. I just wanted to be real brief and just thank the members of council who are supporting our advocacy in the CBA fight, and I would like to send future thanks to those who I hope will see the light. So thank you.
Are there any more citizens to be heard?
One more. My name is Mike Dollar, my property is 19th and Reed. Good to see you, Mayor. That other mayor we had, I don't know, I forgot what he looked like, I'd seen him very seldom. Council didn't see too much of him, I don't believe. But I'm glad to see you down here. That shows that you're interested in something. I have a few issues. Of course, you know I always do. I see all of these contractors around town, a lot of them are doing business with the city, but I don't see no coffee-colored faces out there. All I see is white faces. Black folks need a job too, they need some money. They need some money. That's not right. We pay taxes to them. Yeah, mine do now. I got to hustle up the money. I want to see some black faces out there, and I mean that too. That's not right. We pay taxes. I don't think we should have to, but we do. We don't get nothing for it. We don't even get police protection through our neighborhood, because we live in the ghettos. But we still paying taxes. It don't make sense to me to have to pay for something that you're not getting, and we're not getting anything for our money. But we're paying, we're paying. Those little fellows was onstage, it did my hard good to see them up there. There should be more interest taken in our young people, black and white. But the black ones are left behind. We don't have to fight for a place for the white kids to go. There will be places for them to go. I look at that old armory down there on 6th Street, 6th and 9th Parade. They got rid of that armory. They got rid of Colleolatorium over there, they tore all of that now. What do the peoples on the Lower East Side have? What, what can they go? What can they... It don't make sense to me. That should never have been sold. That should have been given to the peoples on the Lower East Side. You know I'm right. I'm right. Everything, just for a hot dollar, our kids are more important than anything, and they need all the help they can get now. I don't understand. When I was coming along, my parents loved me. I went to the school board meeting, there hardly anybody over there. You got to go and see about your kids, see how they're being treated. Your kids are all you got. Those are our future generations. If you don't treat them right now, they're not going to treat you right later on. You're going to be sitting up in a home somewhere wishing that you had have treated them right. If you bring them up right, they'll do good. Kids will do good. Because I came up on the rough side of the mountain. Things were rough back then, you can believe it if you want to. I don't know, about now, things are pretty, pretty rough now too. We got to love our kids. If you don't show no love, you won't get none. You got to show love. Our kids are our greatest asset. If you don't love them, you want somebody else to love them, you don't want them going to jail, I hope you don't, so you do all you can for them now. You do all you can for them. Because later on, you might regret that you didn't do. And I thank you for your time, and y'all don't forget what I'm trying to tell you.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. That takes us to ordinances.
Ordnances for final passage, council file number 15640, official ordinance number 292018, an ordinance of the City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a guarantee agreement with Erie Parking and Authority and compliance with the provisions thereof, approving the issuance by the authority of guaranteed parking revenue bond series of 2018 in an amount not to exceed $2,500,500. Repelling all inconsistent ordinances, directing the proper officers of the city to take necessary actions, and further directing that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, that council file ordinance bill number 15640, and now known as official file ordinance number 292018, be finally passed by the City Council.
Madam President, before we vote on this, I just want the community to know that the city's not borrowing any money with this, this is merely a guarantee of the loan to give a favorable interest rate to the parking authority.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass official file ordinance number 292018, finally, by ye seven, nay zero. Ordnances for first reading, introduced by Mr. Winarsky, council file number 15641, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $24,894 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, donation from Erie County District Attorney drug account. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that council file ordinance number 15640... By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Number 15641, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15641, by a seven, nay zero, on first reading.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I second it.
Are there any separations?
No separations? Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, don't make me laugh, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And that'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Okay, we'll start with Cass.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Well, our last meeting was nothing. This week was, the last two weeks was really a trip into all my committee meetings. We attended a water reserve meeting recently along with Councilman Witherspoon and Councilwoman Schoff, and Councilwoman Allen stopped in later. And just want to report to the public and to the mayor that that fund is now roughly 12.2 million and growing. And as usual, we will give the city a portion of that later on this year. That's what the fund is designed for, and due to the diligence of the committee, the council, and the advisors, it is making good progress. I also attended the investment committee meeting for the aggregate board, also the aggregate pension meeting, where it was pointed out that our fund is now roughly 265 million and making great progress also. It's doing what it's supposed to do. It's meeting its obligations, and the community and the administration should be proud of the hard work of the board. I attended, I had the, I don't know if it's an honor or a pleasure, but along with Councilwoman Schoff and Ellen, we toured the wastewater treatment plant, which to say is a great experience. I think it's one of those things you don't realize how important it is or its main mission. And after spending about three hours there in the hot sun, my extreme, I'm trying to think of the right word, to the workers, you know, I applaud their efforts, and the community should be proud of the quality of product that they put back into the water after they're done. And they're going to be approaching us probably for some help in a bond issue. And after being explained how the equipment works, and I think the consensus of those of us who are there, and there are members of the other outline communities also on the sewer board, that there are things that need to be done to keep that plant processing properly. It's one of those things that's underneath you, you don't see it, and politicians certainly don't want to be there at ribbon cuttings. But it is just as important as when we put an addition onto a stadium or we build a brand-new building. Tended National Night Out, excuse me, I attended National Night Out. I got to about five places. Three, I can only remember three offhand, was Best, Snoop's 18th Street, and a couple others. I hit them on the run gridly. It was a great evening, and thanks to the mayor and everybody who was there and fellow council people. Also tended the ECOG work session in Benangle Township. There's an issue or two that may affect the city that, along with Ma Sela, we were there, will pass it on to the administration. We had a study session, which I think, I hope was productive, with code enforcement and the quality of life ticketing and other subjects that came up. And so I think we got a lot accomplished there. I think that just about does it, and- Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Bishop Brock and Bishop Mock for all that you do for our city and our citizens, to lift our citizens up. I am thrilled to be a part of the uplifting of Erie. It cut at my heart today when it was mentioned that we are like a Third World city, and we are not. And one of the biggest things that is the difference is we do have a great sewage treatment plant. And if you've been to Third World countries that do not have sewage, people get sick, people die, and we have a wonderful asset for the entire Erie County. I thank Mr. Joe Schember for being out there, present in our community, that people freely engage with you, and you're a good listener, and thank you for being here. You've heard so many people talk about community benefits agreements, and I am for community benefits agreements, and I would like to see more done, a committee formed to make sure that their guidelines are in line with the bigger construction projects. I can understand small construction and housing different than the bigger construction. But we need to have a living wage, like you had mentioned, Mr. Schember. Unfortunately, my two children do not live in Erie. They live out of state, and they need to pay back their school loans and et cetera. They've tried living in Erie, but they weren't able to get that wage. Not everybody needs to go to college, and I really believe that we need a continued skills center to employ people who can teach other people skills. And it was just mentioned on the news tonight that I was watching that not enough people are enrolled in our technical skills programs. And I really think that if we get them at the young level, the Junior Achievement Program that I know Erie Insurance is one of the sponsors of, gets the children at the elementary level, gets them thinking about different jobs. It's not just computer, technology, lawyer, what have you, but we need people to work at the sewage treatment plant. We need people to, all the different jobs out there. I pass on 38th Street, oh, I can't remember the name of the company, maybe it's Carlin, Carlin it is. And they want plumbers. They want people to work in different jobs there. Welders, I always see a sign for welders needed. So I am for community benefits agreements. I want the talk to engage the community with that and engage the bigger companies that will be promoting their business here in Erie, Pennsylvania. I really like our National Night Out and our neighborhood organizations. Some of them are not as big as, let's say, like the West Bay Front, but we need that all throughout the city. So anyone who has time on your hand to make a difference, you can make a difference by engaging with these groups. The nonprofits just had a big day with Erie Gives. There are so many nonprofit organizations out there that need help. I asked for the lights to be turned back on. I talked to somebody, I'm not going to mention their name, but someone mentioned that the lights are not. Maybe we could have them on until, and I like the idea of, when someone said the bridge update, Bishop Mock, that was you. I think we all deserve that because I don't know where it is at this time, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Like Cass had mentioned, we did have a study session with code enforcement and Andy Zimmerman. Naturally, one of the main topics was the quality of life ticketing program that we have in place but just needed to be tweaked, or what we were going to do to enforce it. I mean, it's on paper, it's a good ordinance, but what we have to keep in mind is how we can do it where we're showing some compassion for the elderly who may not be able to handle some of the requests or some of the less fortunate, but how we can still do it and still enforce what needs to be done to help improve the city, keep the city safe, clean, healthy, where people want to come and raise that family. So although we're still working on it, and I believe we're all in as a council to make everything we possibly can better with this, it's just going to take some time and how things are going to be enforced. Another topic was with the delinquent and the rental fees. Naturally, there's roughly over $200,000 that is in the rears or delinquent payments that is still owed. Even though that money is, yes, it's over $200,000, but we are seeing more transparency, we are getting more answers on how we're going to collect those or how they're being put towards the delinquencies. And what people also really got to realize at the end of the day, if we're 240,000 down over a 12-year period, I want to say in the long run, we're still ahead on the city's end of it because we're not sending the fire trucks out to take on these fires and other issues that may happen with some of these rental properties. So half-empty, half-full, but at least we're heading in the right direction on trying to, shall we say, push to make this a better program than it already is. Another issue is definitely the high grass in the neighborhoods. We have something in place where it still takes 30 to 45 days before somebody's actually cited for high grass, and by then, summer's over, or half the summer's over, and they do it once and then they're a repeat offender. That isn't fair to the neighbors. It just isn't good for the city of Erie on the whole. So another thing with code enforcement, which has to be looked into to change how we put the warning out there, hey, you have five days to get this mode or you're going to be fined. But that needs to be adjusted in our ordinance also to, once again, make a better city, a clean city, a safe city. Other than that, I celebrate Erie this weekend. Please, come out, celebrate our hometown. A lot of good things are going to be happening, and Erie is a good place to live. So come on down, enjoy, and it's, once again, free. And that's one of the Erie things we like, free. And I better mention Zabava next weekend so I don't get any flack from my friends at Holy Trinity. So this weekend, celebrate Erie. Next weekend, Holy Trinity is Zabava. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I would thank the mayor for his presentation. I think it was outstanding presentation. He gave us something to look forward to and something to work with when we get to the budget time. And of course, at any point in time, you and your staff can contact any member of council, and we'd be more than happy to assist wherever we can. It's your job to run the administration and the city. It's our job to pass the laws, and that's what we should be about. I'd like to thank Bishop Brock for bringing the young men down. I knew quite a few of them. There was one who told me he brought his trophies with him. Could he show us the trophies? And I told him, yeah, but he got one trophy, he got lucky and he beat me in a game, and the other trophy, he got lucky again and beat Bishop Brock. So I kind of conveniently forgot to call him up about the trophy. One of the citizens mentioned today about we get $6,000 a year, and she wanted us to do a little more than we're doing. Well, my calculation says that we're working under minimum wage, $6,000 a year. And there's a big push nationally to increase the minimum wage. So prior to the increase of minimum wage, whenever that comes about, I plan to put on the agenda next week that council receives minimum wage. That means we'll get about $1,000 more a year. Now, the sitting council will not get that. It would be the ones who come back or the new council. So I just want you to be prepared for that. Thank you, Madam President.
I wrote a list. It has like 10 things on it, so I'm going to have to talk faster than usual. I just wanted to mention, in terms of the wastewater treatment plant tour, one of the things that I thought was interesting was hearing from a civil engineer from one of the suburbs who works at the sewer authority there, talking about major rain events and how we're going to have more of them due to climate change. So it's one of those things where you recognize that, you know, issues that we need to be thinking about globally and nationally do affect Erie. If there's more of these big rain events, we're going to be in big trouble at the sewage treatment plant if we don't do the capital improvements there. I did not attend the study session on quality of life ticketing because I was working that night, but I did attend the Neighborhood Growth Partnership meeting earlier that day. There was some very good discussion. There were a lot of neighborhood groups represented there, and the redevelopment authorities, AmeriCorps volunteer Erin Carey, Kathy Rosdick, Chuck Scalise, and I met yesterday to talk about preparing some type of toolkit to help citizens learn their way around the blight-removal neighborhood revitalization maze. So it was a lot of good discussion about how to communicate, including if and when the quality of life ordinance is passed. It has not been passed yet, so I just wanted to make sure people knew about that. I was sitting here thinking about community benefits. I've been trying to learn as much as I can about community benefit agreements. There was some really good conversation here, but one of the things that, and this may have been inadvertent, but one of the people who came up here talked about corporations that take up space, corporations that take up space provide jobs. In addition to people talking about construction jobs, we really need to start talking about how do we get kids educated so that the kids who are here from the Eagles Nest, the kids who got scholarships, who at my brother's keeper's brunch on Saturday at St. James AME, so that they are prepared to get jobs at Erie Insurance. I just checked the website while we were sitting here. There are 65 jobs in the Erie location. Those jobs are IT software, business analyst. We can't have that discussion unless we have a conversation that recognizes that business is important. So let's not say corporations take up spaces. I worked at a corporation, which happened to be a newspaper, all of my life, from the time I was 16 years old. I want to have a conversation about community benefits, but it's going to have to be, there's going to have to be give and take on both sides. One of the things that struck me, Kathy Schoff and I were interviewed by the Urban Land Institute, and the panel that interviewed us was the former mayor of Pittsburgh, Tom Murphy, and Lucia Garrus, chief administrator for Development and Infrastructure Services for Hillsborough County, Florida. At the end of that process, ULI delivered a report, I don't know how many people were there, at Erie Insurance, here we are again, at Erie Insurance Auditorium. The- The story in the paper talked about having a tram come down State Street. Two of the things that were really important, that I think may have been not highlighted enough, were not only the need for a community college, but the recommendation, these are people, experts, who were just in town for a couple of days, who not only strongly backed a community college, but said it should be in the Innovation District, which is in downtown Erie. If we get that community college, people will be trained, we will be able to have the people trained for the kinds of jobs that are here today, tomorrow, and in the future. So I really urge people who are out there lobbying for community benefits agreements to pay attention to the community college where we have been neglected for decades. We don't even know if we're going to get the community college, we need the community college. That's how we're going to produce skilled workers and entrepreneurs. I think it's really important that we don't lose sight of the fact that these young men who are here, I never would have been able to recite all the pledge and everything that they did when I was seven or eight years old, I would have been terrified. I never would have been able to memorize all that, think of the future that they have. So I think we need to have that conversation. One more thing about Pittsburgh, not somebody who was here tonight, somebody who was here previously talked about Pittsburgh City Council fighting back against UPMC Mercy Hospital Shadyside, being opposed to development there. Unfortunately, the person who spoke about that did not follow up. That project passed by a 7 to 2 vote. I urge you to go and Google the story about UPMC Shadyside and Pittsburgh, the city council people who ended up approving that development, they don't have a formal, they didn't get the whole community benefit agreement, there were people mad that council passed it, however, they did get an addiction clinic. So I think there need to be some really specific requests in terms of community benefits and how you get those things brought together. I'm on a roll.
Madam President, I'll try to make this as brief as possible, but I have a lot of things as well. From the Erie County Convention Center Authority, obviously, we have a meeting tomorrow, but the big news was the governor coming in town with the R cap of $12 million, which will keep the Sea Wolves and the Bayhawks in Erie for another 10 years each, and provide much-needed renovations to the ballpark, which hasn't been renovated in over a decade. And we all knew from the media reports that the Detroit Tigers were very, thinking of pulling out if the ballpark was not, especially the field conditions were not improved. So those are good things. Also, along with that, from economic development, the Avalon Hotel received $1 million, and the owners are putting in $15 million to renovate that facility, and I think to, most people in Erie would agree, it's an aged building, and it's showing its age, and it's kind of become, at least from the exterior, an eyesore when you compare the rest of the renovations that are going on in that neighborhood with the Velocity Net and with Marquette buying the property across the street. So this will allow them to renovate that, and when they renovate that, realize, that takes up almost a whole city block, and so you're really transforming that neighborhood. And when you couple that with what's going on at Velocity Net, it's going to do great things for that neighborhood, increase value, increase other businesses that are going to have confidence now that there's investment in this community. So that's a, the state, those are competitive grants, and they make strategic investments where they think they're going to get the most bang for their buck. And that was one of them. Also Elmwood Gardens, helping our senior citizens with $500,000 for renovations at Elmwood Gardens, Senior Home, and then the previous announced $2 million for the JMC Ice Arena. This is $15.5 million in state revenue being invested in the city of Erie. Your tax dollars, hard at work, putting people to work, and to what the people said about community benefit agreements, these state dollars come with a condition of prevailing wage, so everyone who's working on these projects is being paid prevailing wage, a living wage for Pennsylvania. So those are good things. I wanted to also just let people know that school starts August 27th, I said October, wow, August 27th, the first day of school for students, so please, as you're driving, make, be aware first off that the children are going to be out and about, second off, you might want to adjust accordingly, you know, when parents are dropping off, you might have to change your routes, or be aware that that's going to be happening. And some of the things that I attended, oh, I did want to say, too, I met with Diana Ames from the Mental Health Association, and we had a good conversation, and one of the things that we talked about was how a lot of the social service agencies downtown operate in silos, and there's not a lot of coordination of services, and that's something that we can look at to help with the problem downtown, that it's, I want to be part of the solution, and it's not just, we have to be uplifting, but also set clear expectations for having a quality community, a quality downtown. Regarding the study session, I did want to make a point, somebody said that we're changing ordinances and we're putting new regulations on people. That's not true. All of the ordinances that are quality-of-life aren't changing. The only thing that's changing is the punishment, basically, or the consequence for not doing it. Instead of taking it through the courts, this is actually a simpler system, instead of a $500 fine through the courts, or a $300 fine, it's a $25 ticket. So actually, the consequence is less, but it's more immediate. And I think that that was my big takeaway from it, but nothing's changed in terms of ordinances. The laws that are the laws now are still going to be the laws after the quality-of-life ticketing system, if it passes. I also wanted to let people know just some of the events, we attended National Night Out, met a lot of good people there, the Pride Picnic at Prescott State Park, Blessed Sacrament Block Party, I also participated in Serve Erie, and I worked at the Booker T. Washington Center, and there's an article that was on Go Erie Today about the good things that happened there, and I know many of my colleagues and the mayor also did Serve Erie activities and gave back to the community. And Friendship Baptist Unity Day, that was a very nice event on the west side at Friendship Baptist Church, Blessed Sacrament Block Party, we were there, St. Paul's Italian Festival, a lot of good people coming back into the city and enjoying the neighborhood. I know a couple of my colleagues were there as well. And finally, I just wanted to give my condolences to our police staff, our officers, and the family of Officer Mike Conway on his passing unexpectedly. Anytime that you lose somebody unexpectedly like that, it's a shock to the system, and our men and women in our police force are some of the finest people, and it was a loss for all of them, and so we offer them our condolences.
I also, too, would like to give my condolences to the Conway family, the friends of Officer Conway and the Police Department. And with that said, I too am a supporter of CBAs. I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, Rose, we have a study session coming up September 6, I believe it is.
September 6 at 5:30.
Yes, we have a study session coming up about the CBA, so whoever has some input, get your team together so you can come sit around the table, because we got a lot, a lot of work to do if we want to make this work for our community. And I really think that the main thing that's missing in the Erie community is the unity in community. We are all in different corners, different corners, and if we just came together, we can get so much done in the Erie community, you know? We need to take off the boxing gloves, you know, and just come together as a community and fix what we can fix together, together. And I definitely want to give a shout-out to Bishop Brock and what he's doing with the young men, you know? The youth are our future, and that's an investment in our future, and I'm all about the youth. What we show them today is what they're going to bring us tomorrow. So if we show them positive, they're going to bring us positive. If we show them negative, they're going to bring us negative. So we just need to continue to work together as a community to make Erie a great place to live, thrive, and raise children. And with that said, Mayor, do you have anything?
Yes, I'll be very brief. National Night Out was a wonderful event, so many of you, as I went around, really enjoyed that. I just wanted to let you know, our press conference, our Thursday press conference will be 10 o'clock tomorrow, as it usually is on Thursdays, and we were going to focus on five different Summer of Hope activities, and the fifth one is going to be Celebrate Erie, which starts tomorrow, and there are these brochures available, I don't know if you all got one yet, that there've been a lot of them around, and it gives all the details, and it's a good way to find your way around Celebrate Erie. And lastly, I just want to thank Aaron Lonkey and his team, who have been working literally day and night, wouldn't surprise me if they're still up there in the office working when I go back, but they're doing a wonderful job, it's going to be a wonderful event, and I want to encourage everybody to please attend that. Thank you.
Okay, that brings our city council meeting to a close, we're adjourned.
City council adjourns at 10:09. Ms. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Ms. Witherspoon.